This is called order of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Mount Healthy City Schools for March 21st, 2024. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting, and I will come back and elaborate on that a little bit more after our executive session. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Turner?
I'm here. Thank you. Could you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with justice and justice for all. Board members have had the opportunity to look at the agenda for this evening. Do we have...oh, things are kind of out of order here. I guess we're going into executive session, and then we'll do the agenda. So can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. All right, we are going into executive session at 6:02, and we will be back. Aren't we ready to start again? Hello?
It's 7:15 to 7:30. Will you accept cards late?
Yeah, absolutely.
If anybody has a card, just pass it to Lavanda, and they agree.
What we could do is we could push the public participation to later in the meeting. Would that help?
Yeah.
Okay. So we are out of executive session. Oh, I forgot to pay attention to what time.
7:15.
7:15, oh yeah, that's true, I guess. Okay. Okay. So board members have had the opportunity to see the agenda for this evening, but we are going to make an amendment to the agenda. So let's put public input...how about if we do that right before the consent agenda? Because that's pretty much the end of the meeting. If that's okay with everyone? All right, so we're going to put public input.
Yeah, I would say before the...
Just before the consent agenda, which is item J on here?
Before the resolution.
Before the resolution.
You want to do it before the resolution?
Yes.
We could do that. Okay. Oh.
Can you put the mic closer to me, because I can hear a little bit?
How about this? To me, it sounds incredibly loud, even when it was way back there, but thank you for letting me know. Okay, so the public input is usually item 7B. We're going to move it back to just before item I on the agenda. So that...because I know we...I apologize that we had to reschedule things and move things around so much. A board member had a death in the family, and the funeral visitation was Monday evening, so we had to move it from Monday, and it was really hard to come up with a day and time that all the board members could attend. So this was the best we could do, but we can definitely do the public input towards the end so that people have the opportunity for that. Okay, do I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. All right, board members have also had the opportunity to see the minutes from the regular meeting and the organizational meeting. No, the organizational meeting was in September, was in January. Board members have had the opportunity to see the minutes from the February 5th regular meeting and a special...and special meetings held on February 12th and February 28th. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion on the minutes? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes. Item 7A on the agenda is Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Ms. Wakefield?
First, I would like to acknowledge the extra time that the HR department has put in to ensure that this nightmare of a situation has followed our collective bargaining agreement and Ohio law. The transparency and cooperative problem solving has been appreciated. With that being said, I speak on behalf of the 262 members of the Mount Healthy Teachers Association when I say that the district has failed us. The district has failed our community. The district has failed our students. Teaching in Mount Healthy is a passion. It is calling. It is hard. Even the good days are hard, but we love it. We choose to be here. We choose to put in the countless hours beyond contract time to prepare for our students. We choose Mount Healthy next year, even though our jobs will be so much harder because you have failed us.
Thank you. I'm guessing I know that no one's going to leave, but for those members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now would be the appropriate time for you to leave. Oh, oh, yeah. Did we have any other communication and announcements aside from the public input?
Please do not.
No, you're right, I missed that. Item 8 on the agenda is the Great Oaks Board Report.
I actually apologize this time, I was very ill and had to miss the Great Oaks Board meeting. I will have notes from that board meeting when they just send the highlights, but I was not physically present, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you. Item 9 is the Legislative Liaison Report.
The Legislative Liaison Report is before everyone. I'll just read some highlights. Tried to do a little better job of summarizing it versus the first time I did the Legislative Report. Amendments to Senate Bill 83, which are formally referred to as the Higher Education Destruction Act, have been included in the budget bill affecting the collective bargaining rights and educational content. A new amendment requires school districts to offer academic intervention services for students performing limited in-state assignments, assessments, imposing potential unfunded mandates, which is just what our school systems need, and changes in school vouchers laws allow private schools to charge additional tuition fees beyond voucher amounts, which has potentially... which will potentially impact students under the 200% of federal poverty level. In terms of budget implications in education funded...funding, Senate budget revisions could decrease support for Ohio's public schools by approximately $246 million, and that's versus a budget of $12.97 billion, and that's for fiscal year '24, and then $295 million for fiscal year '25 versus a projected budget of $13.39 billion. So that's compared to what the House is proposing. Proposed budget maintains updated data for calculating base costs, but adjusts to phase in percentages affecting school funding levels. In terms of legislation affecting school policies and rights, the Parent Bill of Rights, which is House Bill 8, requires schools to adopt policies on parental notification concerning student health and instructional materials. And governance...in terms of governance and oversight changes, Senate Bill 1 proposes transferring powers from the State Board of Education to the new Department of Education and Workforce, limiting public and educator input on academic standards and policy. So that's the top-level report on...in terms of the Legislative Report. That's all I have.
Thank you. Item 10 is the Report of the Treasurer. Ms. Hughes?
Thank you. Letter A is the Treasurer's Update, and in your packet you will have an update on the Recovery Plan Tool that we are using as a tracking mechanism for the deductions that we will have to make in the school district. This is a plan that will not require board approval. However, it is just a snapshot of the expenditure reductions and any revenue enhancements that the district may have. The action that the board is going to be taking tonight is reflected in this plan, and as you will see on page 3, it says projected forecast, projected forecast after plan. What you will see in fiscal year '24, that there is a small reduction to our current deficit, and that's due to us reclassifying some positions. I've been working with our Director of Federal Programs in an effort to be able to move some of our general fund expenditures as it relates to staffing to idea B. So the reduction or the items that you see, the amount that you see in fiscal year '24 is a result of those reclassifications. In fiscal year '25, with the list of names that the board is taking action on tonight, you will receive that...you will see that there is a deficit reduction from $24 million to $15 million for fiscal year '25. And fiscal year '26, you'll see a move from $43 million to $23 million as a result of the expenditure enhancements. And as a result of fiscal year '27, you will see a reduction from $66 million to $34 million. So what we've been able to do in fiscal year '28, you'll see a reduction from $90 million to $47 million. And these numbers are cumulative because if the employee was eligible for an increase, a step increase, we are able to provide or include those calculations within the recovery plan. So right now, these are the items that I have currently access to. This document is very fluid, so as I receive updates, this workbook will be updated to reflect those deductions that the district will be making. With that noted, at the next board meeting, this plan will look very different because I will have additional items that will be included in this workbook. So that's the Treasurer's Updates. Letter B...I'm... Letter B, Recommendation to Accept the Financial Statements for February 2024. And that's also included in your attachment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11 on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Dr. Turner. The first part, under informational items, we have a number of change orders. We are finishing up the culinary project, and the change orders are listed below. The ones that are in parentheses are actually credits that are coming back to the district. Some have a dash that did not require any monetary change. The only one that actually required a monetary change was listed at $1,659.90, and that was part of the cut curbs at the food pantry. So that's just informational items for the board. We are still under budget of the Culinary Center, which was funded by grant money. The second item is the Mount Healthy City Schools. We were going to...we will be partnering with The Well. We applied and received a grant with this organization, and they provide social, emotional learning supports for students. So this is one way that we will be trying to bring additional supports to our staff as they face challenges next year. So that is just informational item. Item B is a recommendation that Mount Healthy City School District permit the enrollment of students from any Ohio district in a school or program of this district, provided each enrollment is in accordance with the laws and regulations of the state concerning inter-district open enrollment, the provisions of the policy, and the administrative guidelines established to implement this policy. And we had thought about putting that on last month and decided to hold it a month. That's why there is a first and second reading tonight. We wanted to make sure that there would not be a penalty to the district financially by moving to open enrollment. Right now, we are not open enrollment, but that would be a way that we could bring in more revenue to the district. We have decreased in our enrollment over the past decade by around 1,300 students. So this would involve recommendation of the board, and I would ask that we do the first and second reading tonight so that we can go ahead and start taking applications.
Do I have a motion to permit the open enrollment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Carter, actually seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the first reading for the recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaw and policy changes, 5113, revised inter-district open enrollment. Item D is the second reading for the recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education bylaw and policy changes, 5113, revised inter-district open enrollment.
Do I have a motion to accept the first and second reading?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the recommendation to approve the purchase of a server for North Elementary for the new security cameras from Turnkey Technology. The total cost will be $34,371.88. We received a safety grant for this purchase.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to approve the purchase of a server for South Elementary for the new security cameras from Turnkey Technology. The total cost is $34,371.88. This was paid for with a safety grant.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. What's...do you know the name of this grant?
It was Safety and Security Grant through Ohio Department of Education.
Any additional discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Item G is the recommendation to approve the purchase of license plate recognition from Flock Safety at the junior senior high. The total cost is $9,000, and it will be paid for from the Safety and Security Grant.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion on that?
What is this?
This would be, in the evening at the junior senior high complex, we have a lot of cars that drive through pretty continually, and we have had some damage to the district buildings and even over in the sports arena area. There were people who were doing donuts and different types of things over there. So if there is something that happens, there will be a reader, and it helps law enforcement identify the cars that might be here in the off-hours.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the recommendation to approve the purchase and installation of security cameras for the Early Learning Center. The total cost would be $18,082, and this would be paid for with Safety and Security Grant Funds.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Now we're going to move to public input, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Turner.
Thank you. So are there more cards for people who want to address the board? No, okay. So a reminder for those of you who want to address the board, you'll need to stand at the podium over there and use the microphone so that it's captured on the videos. We have, according to the rules of the board, you have the right to address the board if you are an employee of the district, which I think the people who want to address the board all are, or a resident of the district, or a parent or guardian of a student in the district, but I think that's...that applies to everyone here. You have a limit of three minutes, and I know that people are upset, and I just wanted to say, we're all upset too, which maybe doesn't make you feel any better at all. It's been a really hard couple of months for everyone on the board, everyone at central office. We know people who are losing their jobs here. We hate to see this happen as well, and I know that that doesn't help in the least, but I want to say it anyway. Okay. First, we have Marla Waldron.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say that, as working in the district 25 years now, my coworkers and I just really don't understand how, in a few months, we go from physical caution to emergency. And do we overhire based on our number of students? You know, what in the world? Like, everybody...we're really afraid, even the ones who are staying here, you know, afraid for the future of our district. Like, we can't...like, how do the numbers...you know, when you project a financial forecast, it just doesn't make sense. Something doesn't add up. That...I mean, I know that numbers change, but all the time in working in this district, I've never seen that. I've never seen in just a matter of months. And I know some of you on the board have been on the board, and I understand that, and maybe you're in the same position that we are in saying, how does this happen? You know, we trust our school board to manage the financial part of the district, you know, and so we feel like we're on a sinking ship. So yes, we are sad, we're angry, we're upset, and people don't really know. I know that we've...it's been explained, the different, you know, financial aspects and about the millage and this and that, but then again, you know, I remember working for Levy and trying to get Levy passed. Been 2003 since we had one. So like, why was that? Maybe there should have been one before, but now here we are. So it's just basically, just so you know, that people who've been in the district, we are upset because this is our livelihood, and we have a passion for the students in this district. And to see things at the state, it's really...we're not feeling very assured, so I think you should know that, and that's really it.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Judy Norton. Thank you.
I need to get myself together. Some of you, like Mr. Kilgore, have known me since I was in high school. I have spent...I'm 54. I have spent over 40 years in this district. My mom sat at that table for 10 years and fought for teachers and students, you know, and you hired people this year. I have six people on my team, four of them you just let go. Four people that showed up at Open House at the beginning and bought Mount Healthy stuff because they were going to be family, because that's what Mount Healthy has always been. It's been family. It's been family. And you're going to tell me we've lost 1,300 people? You guys have known, for some of you that have been up there, you've known we've been losing it. Why wouldn't...why were we not open enrollment before if that could have brought in some more money? Because now we're at the point where we don't have any money, and I...trust me, I understand. My mom sat there, and I learned a lot. I got an education on money and grants, and I get it, you get grant money, you say yes, 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 yes. And the board people that came before you said yes, 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 yes to everything. You need to start asking questions. Can we afford to say yes? Why? Why are we getting a grant for...I'm sorry, what did you say, $9,000, $18,000? For license plate readers? Why...how much would it cost to put in gates and lock the gates? Lock the gates if people are misbehaving on our property? Are gates going to cost us $18,000? Do we need a grant for that? I will pour the concrete myself and help you put the gates in. You are...you are letting people go that cared about this district, and this district needs people. And the 10 years before that, the people sat at that table and they watched good teacher after good teacher leave because of all kinds of reasons. And I'm disappointed that my union is not here more in power, and I'm disappointed that my community, that I have spent over 40 years, is not here asking you questions. You have to stop saying yes. And you need to start asking questions 'cause it is hurting your people and it is hurting our kids.
If, if I could respond just slightly to that and, and the public input doesn't guarantee a response, but, but I would like to. And, and again, I know you don't wanna hear it, I know you don't care, but we all hate this situation. We do. But I'm, I'm a little confused about why you wouldn't want us to take grant money. Grant money does not cost the district anything. We hear all the time from community members, from teachers, that, no, I'm sorry, your time to speak is up, you don't get to respond to this. I'm just responding to yours. We hear all the time that we don't take, you know, that we need to do more to make our schools safe and secure. This is grant money. This does not cost the district a dime and it's doing the kinds of things that make our schools safer. So I don't, I, I guess, I, I will let you just, if you want to clarify, I, I'm not understanding why that is a problem.
Okay. No, I will ne, no, no, no. I will never not say that this district should take whatever grant money is going to make our schools and my, and our children and my children. You know, because those are my students, those are my children and I will do whatever it takes to keep them safe. So no, I want you to take that money. My, my thing is, is that as someone who has been in this district for over forty years and who has stomped the pavement since nineteen eighty-eight in my volleyball uniform and fought for every levy, you understand, like, you've put us in a position where, how are we gonna ask for a levy? How are we gonna ask for the district to, to help us out when we are? And I get it, I get it, you got a grant to build the culinary wing and I think it's, if it's good for our kids, it's good for me. But the optics, you understand that? How are we gonna go, right? That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, great, take all the grant money you can get. I want it. Great, grant money, right? Brock is helping me take my kids to Camp Kern this year.
Okay.
And I can't, I can't thank him enough. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I, I just needed a little clarification. I wasn't understanding why, why you were wanting us not to take grant money is what I was getting.
No, I don't want you to not take grant money.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. All right. And, and just so everyone understands, just so everyone understands something like, and I'm sure most of you do, but if we get a grant for Safety and Security, that is all we can use that grant for. It's not like we can say, okay, we can keep a couple more teachers on this year because, and we just won't get those safety things. Okay. Okay, we, okay. We need to move on. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Hawkins.
Item I is the recommendation to approve the following resolution. Mount Healthy City School District Board of Education. The resolution to suspend contracts in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and Board of Education policy. Whereas the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District, hereafter the Board, has received a recommendation from the superintendent of a reduction of force in the administrative exempt and certified staff. And whereas in addition to the authority provided in these sections of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education has adopted policy pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, permitting the Board to institute reductions in force as a result of financial reasons and due to reorganization and/or consolidation of functions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Mount Healthy City School District as follows. Section one, in accordance with Sections three-three-one-nine-point-one-seven-one of the Revised Code, the following administrative contracts will be suspended indefinitely effective July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four as a result of the financial reasons and due to reorganization and/or consolidation of the administrative positions. The second group, in accordance with Sections one, we, we discussed saying the names and it was determined for privacy, we were not gonna say the names. The administrators that are listed under the first section.
I would, if we decided that we shouldn't do it for privacy, if you're here and you want your name read, that's fine, but we're not going to read anyone's name. We're not going to read anyone's name who is not here. I do not. It is a public record and anyone who wants to read this. Yeah, if you wanna stand, if you wanna go up there and say your own name, that's fine. We're not going to read the names of all of the people on this list. It is compassion to not make this public when people are not here and don't have the right to consent to it. Sorry. Dr. Hawkins, please continue. If you want to go up and say your name, that's fine. No?
The second section, in accordance with Sections one-two-four-point-three-two-one of the Revised Code, the following exempt personnel shall be suspended indefinitely effective June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four as a result of financial reasons and due to reorganization and/or consolidation of positions. The third group, in accordance with Sections three-three-one-nine-point-one-seven of the Revised Code and Article five-point-zero-seven of the Collective Bargaining Agreement, the following certified contract shall be suspended indefinitely effective August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four as a result of financial reasons and due to reorganization and/or consolidation of positions. Section two, the superintendent shall provide notice to the effective employees of the suspension of the contracts as soon as possible and said notice shall, if applicable, include notice of right to recall pursuant to policy or if applicable, to a teaching position under Ohio law. Section three, it is found and determined that all formal action of this Board concerning or related to the adoption of this resolution was adopted in an open meeting of this Board and all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all applicable requirements of the Ohio Revised Code.
Do I have a motion? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. Please go ahead.
That also speaks volumes. Um, my name is Jeanette Denlinger.
You haven't, no, if you're sitting up here, it's incredibly difficult to see what's going on out there. It, we have these lights shining right in our eyes.
Okay. My name is Jeanette Denlinger and I am one of the many who have been riffed from Mount Healthy School District.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Yes. Oh, uh, Kim did too. I got the second. Any discussion? Could we take a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson? Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is the recommendation to adopt the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is listed for your review.
Do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as written? Moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Bryant. Any discussion? Any discussion? Could we have a vote, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Item twelve is Special Orders. We don't have any. Thirteen, open discussion of the Board of Education?
Dr. Turner, there's another card for public input.
Okay. Normally we only do the public input at the public input portion of the meeting, but given the circumstances, if Denise Evans would also like to address the Board.
Hi. My name's Denise Evans and I have been an employee in this district. This is my third year. But I've been in education for forty-seven years. And what I, as an employee in the district, I've tried to understand how this deficit happened. Um, in the beginning, when it was talked about, they, we were told there was some investigation. So now that we have done this and we've riffed all these teachers, I'd like to know as an employee, are we gonna be, have an explanation as to how this happened? Because in December, it seemed like everything was okay. So that's my question.
Is it okay? Is it okay if I answer that?
Yeah, yeah.
There has been a process going on between two groups of auditors. We have a group from the Office of Accountability that have been working with us for almost six months. We also have a group from the State Auditor's Office that isn't under the umbrella of the Ohio Department of Education. They are going through their process and when they are finished, we are supposed to get a report from the first group from the Office of Accountability at the end of April. We will be getting our preliminary report from the Auditor's Group, actually on Monday, and then they will give us our final report soon after that. They do two different types of things. The Office of Accountability is looking at everything in the district and showing us, are you similar to your peers? Are you not similar to your peers? You know, what about your salaries, things like that? And will give us suggestions related to ways that we can become financially healthy. The Auditor's Office, they are certifying our finances so that if necessary, and I've had meetings where I feel like that is the direction that we are going, we would be certified that we are going into fiscal emergency and that fiscal emergency designation would then bring in a different group and actually establish a commission that would be working with the school district over the next several years to help us look at every aspect of our organization, to get our five-year forecast in the positive for all five years and to help Mount Healthy get back to the state that it should be financially so that we can focus on the needs that are in our school. So the two different groups, both of those reports will be shared when we get that information. We have not received the official reports yet.
So you are saying that at some point there will be an answer as to why this occurred and it will be shared with us?
I'm not sure what the Auditor's Report will say, but the Auditor's Report will be shared with, with everyone.
And I'd just like to say one more, or maybe three more things. Um, I understand that this has been very painful for everybody involved, but this staff has worked so hard to stay positive, to show up every day knowing, and I am not on the riff list right now, but none of us know what's going on. So when you are saying, or expressing to these people how sad you feel, we're the people that are there every day, taking kids out of the cars, opening their vans to let them out, putting them back in at the end of the day and we're trying to do it all with a very, with a big smile, making them feel that they're loved and accepted while a lot of people are in pain. So I think as visible as this process can be and keeping us informed would be very helpful because people are going to work every day, not sure what they're going to do the next day. And, and we're seeing our peers, Judy mentioned it, she's lost her whole team. So I think to be visible with us on any little detail that you could tell us would really help because none of us know where we're gonna be and I guess that's life. But I've, this is like my fourth district I've worked in. I mentioned forty-seven years. I have never seen this many people cut, ever. And it's really concerning. Thank you.
I will, I, I think most of you probably know, um, we did have some community informational meetings a couple weeks ago that were for any community members, any employees who wanted to come. Uh, Dr. Hawkins did talk about some of how this all happened and how we got to the point that we did. I'm sorry, public input really needs to be done now. We... Okay, if you just wanna say your name. Let me finish saying what I'm saying and then you can do that. We had the public meetings where, you know, not a full explanation because we're still figuring some of this out ourselves. A lot of this has taken us by surprise, which is not what you wanna hear, but it's the truth. So we had public meetings, there will be more public meetings. The next one is March twenty-seventh. There were questions that were supplied before that meeting. The answers to those questions are up on our website if anyone wants to look at those. We are trying to be as transparent as we can be. Some of this, we're, we're still learning ourselves at this point.
Um, I just wanna say my name. I was, or am, on the riff list that was just approved and I know this is out of order, so I wanna say thank you for letting me speak. But my name's MacLeager.
Okay. Any discussion by the Board on any topics? The date of the next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, April fifteenth at six P.M. We will be back at Central Office. Central Office had a terrible leaky mishap this week and was unusable, which is why we're here tonight, but we also wanted to have enough room for everyone. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any discussion on adjournment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.